I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order what is the pleasure of the board regarding the posted agenda. I move to adopt it. Is there a second? There's a second. I have a couple of changes to make. There's a request for an item 6A, a Newton Road pump station update, and a request for a 6B board action required by the Otter Creek Insect Control District, OCICD, something like that.
OCICD.
Otter Creek Watershed.
Watershed.
Thank you very much. Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District. I think something didn't look right. So that would be 6B. Any other changes? Okay. If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as just amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, unanimous. Item two, approval of the board meeting of May 9th. Those minutes were submitted.
Motion approved.
Motion and a second. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as submitted? Definitely not. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. Item three, town manager's report. Mr. Appleton.
This is my report from May 23rd. I wasn't here much last week because I was in a conference in Pittsburgh. So we had bad weather, so I had something to report on. We had a few road and culvert washouts from last week's rainstorm. Stonehill Dam Road had a washout. Old Brandon had a washout. Repaired cross culvert. And a storm structure on Route 7 by Steinberg Road was plugged twice by the sediment falling into it. Two of these are kind of new areas where we're seeing washouts. So the guys have gotten everything put back together and they'll be out assessing and grading and doing all the other roads this week, too. And they spent most of their week working on Old Brandon Road. Also during the storm event, the Newton Road pump station struggled to keep up with the high flows due to the age of the station and the amount of infiltration of storm water. I had to notify Vermont DEC about this and the high flows at the wastewater treatment plant as well. I had a video conference today with some folks at DEC and other state entities to discuss possible solutions and available financial options with amounts of debt forgiveness to decrease our high infiltration in the collection system. So more to come on that. Tim and Steve had located new pumps and controls from one of our vendors that will replace the aging ones at the pump station. We might be able to have the new equipment installed within four to six weeks, which actually we'll be talking about a little later here, too. Notified Aldridge and Elliot about this. They understand the pump station has become an immediate priority for us in support of quick repairs or replacement. The first official notice of delinquent taxes went out Friday, so we're getting calls on that. Total delinquencies were actually down a bit this year, which was nice. Mandatory preview meeting for the Arnold District culvert was held on May 18th. We had about five contractors attend. That bid opening is going to be on June 3rd. And the bid opening for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade was held on May 12th. We had three qualified bids, and Naylor and Green were the apparent bidder at $5.5 million and change. We will be meeting them on the 24th to discuss the project and deducts that were listed in the project. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Dave. Dave, is that number at the wastewater treatment upgrade, is that like about 10% more than the bond authorization?
It's a little bit more. Yeah. That's why we're, so we're, that's why we're having the deduct meeting.
Looking at the deducts, okay.
Yeah.
Questions for the town manager for the board?
I'm very interested in your comment about the high infiltration in our sewer system and how you're looking for, you're having a conversation about possible solutions?
Well, I know what the problem is. It's infiltration from high groundwater and storm water that's coming into our sewer lines somewhere. Been a problem. There was, it was, we did infiltration and inflow testing back in 2012, so before my time, and there were problematic areas discovered. We did fix the, we slip lined the line from Park Village to Champaign Street Pump Station. That took care of a lot of it, but 22 miles of aging infrastructure.
There's something crossing Police Station, too.
No, that needs to be done. That's probably, that's a problematic area, so.
I think what perked my ears up, it sounded like there's a new level of conversation with possible solutions that you'll be bringing to us next news? Is that what I heard in your comments?
Well, the solution is they have to replace the Viper slip line. I mean, that's what we have to do, so. I'm looking at funding options for us to do this right now.
For us to do the infiltration solution, this slip line?
Well, it's, it's kind of, can we save this conversation for when we have the item on the thing? Because I'd like to get into it more, but I don't, I don't want to hold everyone else.
Yeah.
Because I have a lot of stuff to say about it, that's why.
I would love to hear all of it. I think what I was trying to focus in on was in your comments, you said that you were having a conversation with other people to, about possible solutions that were beyond just what we already knew. It sounded like there was new information coming in, and I guess that's what I was just focusing on. So I'll wait till we get to that, if I may.
Questions from the public for the town manager, whether you're here in the room tonight or on Zoom? Anybody with anything to ask the town manager? There's always public comment available at every agenda item, and Dave will always be happy to answer questions as we go along. So I'll move on from that into the dedicated portion for public comment and participation. This would be items not on the agenda that you'd like to highlight for the board. Neil Sillings, tree warden.
I would like to announce to the board, I guess, that actually, and this is pursuant to comment, I think during, oh, the prior week by one of the selectmen, that there were some trees on McConnell Road that looked like they needed significant trimming. The tree warden, the regulatory responsibilities of the tree warden are very limited. The type of trees that qualify as shade trees are very limited, and the responsibilities of the tree warden are very limited unless we have a shade tree preservation plan that the select board agrees to and goes out of public hearing. And I wanted to make the announcement that I will be working in cooperation with Montgaleer to, and I don't think that there's any, this is, the shade tree preservation plan is based on legislation that went in, I think, November of last year. So no town has a completed plan. So I'll be working with them and looking at plans that have gotten maybe as far as their individual town select board pulling out items that seem to be consistent with my thoughts and my thoughts of what Brandon would like, and then they'll go to the select board for comment.
And will you be doing that in coordination with a committee, or is this something you're going to do independently?
Right now, it's independently.
Independently. If folks have feelings or thoughts on that, would you be interested in hearing them?
Sure.
As that's developing?
Sure.
Okay. So.
There is a format for a shade tree preservation plan given in the regulation, so as long as we're within the bounds of that, I'm happy to entertain anything.
And what's the, what's your preferred way for people to get in touch with you or through the town, or how do you want to, how do you want to handle comments about the plan?
Either email or a smooth stone. You know, if they throw a stone at me, if it's smooth, it's okay. If it's got points, that's really not a good idea.
So Dave, I don't imagine, we don't have a dedicated email address for the tree warden?
No.
Okay. So is Neil's, is Neil's contact info on the town website?
Should be.
Should be, could be. Okay. So if it's not now, it can be made available on the town website within reasonable short order. So folks with interest in that concept of developing the shade tree preservation plan can send along some comments to the tree warden. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Other folks with items to bring before the board that don't require a vote? Yes? Mary Ann Hodges.
I'm Mary Ann Hodges, and I live at 41 Park Street, which is three doors up from the library on the same side. And I'm concerned about how dangerous it is driving out of my driveway because of the way cars are parking from my house down to the library. There's no, apparently no designated way that you can't, you have to park there. And so people tend to park diagonally. And there are, I share a driveway, so there are probably six of us that routinely use the driveway every day, multiple times a day. And when you pull out, especially in the daytime, there's so many cars along, parked there, or pickup trucks, and you just creep out. Nobody ever backs out. We all drive out forward, but you creep out and then, you know, it's worth your life whether you are going to get hit and go any further, just because it's so difficult to see. So I was hoping that perhaps some considerations could be given to having some parallel parking there.
So there are, by the library itself, there's some striped head-in parking, right?
And that's, and that's a wider area than.
And then you're saying beyond that point eastward away from town, towards your house, there's a pretty big amount of pavement between the fog line and the curb, and people are parking perpendicular to the curb, but if they parked parallel to it, you'd see better?
Parking diagonal to the curb.
At an angle to the curb? Okay. Dave, thoughts on what's possible? Like, can it be posted? Should it be posted?
Do we have a study?
What's that?
Or repaint it, I think, if we.
I think it's painted at all, as they paint the thing.
I guess that's my.
So a year or so ago, the library talked to us about continuing some of the diagonal parking up to like, the people who just sold their house, that nerves it right down on Park Street. Pam Gatos and.
Very good.
And so we talked to them about it and even like, you know, getting a few more spots for the library there and then stopping it there. So there shouldn't be anybody parking diagonally after that. We'll be out painting lines soon, you know, weather permitting, so we could certainly try it and see what happens. I mean, the only other thing is we'll put signs up, but you know, I don't know how effective they'd be, but we can certainly keep an eye on it.
Okay.
Well, I think what I was catching from Tim was if we just, if we were to paint such that it would be obviously a parallel spot with that.
I was going to. Just do that. There's a lot of paint on that road. Yeah. But we can certainly try that. I don't, it doesn't happen too much past that, though. It's kind of becomes an extension of the way that people are parking before, and then, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
In front of my house is a bioswelle, so that gives you some, the other people further, each gives them more.
Yeah, it's definitely, I mean, I've seen it on some of those, especially like the house right after the library, like if a car's parked diagonally right next to the driveway, it's impossible to see. So, yeah, we can certainly, I'll talk to their guys, maybe they've got something else that they can, like, that would work better, too.
The house that I, or the, the house that I share a driveway with, the owner doesn't live there, so I don't think they've expressed any concern about it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll certainly say we can do with that.
Okay, thanks.
Is there crosswalk repainting, like, scheduled every year, or what is, what is the town's?
We do it every year.
I know we do, but like, is it happening earlier, later?
We try to get it done before the 4th of July, but again, it's weather permitting. And last year, we couldn't get paint. So we didn't get paint until November.
Do we use the same contractor each time?
We do it.
We do ourselves? With our footman?
Yeah, we have a, we have a paint thing. Paint shop. We used to, we've loaned it to Kasalism, Markowski's, and now we have a striper.
Other public comments tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Neil's. I was, I had brought it to Neil's attention that as you're riding around, I'm riding around Brandon, there's a lot of, in the right of way of the tree, there's a lot of, in the right of way, there's a lot of dead limbs, things that come down on a car, come down on people. I just think it's something that's worth taking a look at. I've kind of touched base a little bit with Dave on it, and I didn't know if that was something that fell into Neil's, as being the tree warden, but I just wanted to keep him abreast of it, and I think it's something that we, that we should look at. McConnell Road was one of them that has, if you're ever going up and down through there, if you just take a look at, you'd see, you know, just, the site, they're dead, that shook them down. I always remember Union Street many years ago was coming down, a couple of my friends were in it, and fortunately, they weren't killed, but why, makes us wonder. Did have a good friend killed on a government sale, just driving into it and have it, just no wind, no nothing, just it came down. I think it's something that we should be looking at and taking care of.
So can we ask Neil? Neil, having lived in Vermont since '92 and had a similar experience to what Tracy just described, I worked on a farm for a while where a limb came down and killed someone. My understanding in the past was that the tree warden could determine there were safety concerns and then could go about making these danger trees taken care of. Is it your understanding that you don't have that authority?
I'm actually not sure. I know diseased trees and damaged trees. I don't know about dangerous trees. But we could certainly, I'll, I'm happy to go into it more. And I suggested to Tracy when he brought those to my attention that when he's driving around, if he sees anything that looks dangerous, to let me know.
So have you looked at the trees that he's identified for you?
No, I went down McConnell the other way.
I mean, I hadn't really, I just, having pointed out, I just, I'm not pointing up in my truck, I'm sitting here and just kind of look up, and you just see these, God, that ought to come down.
Yeah, I, yeah, I feel strongly about this as well. It's the kind of thing that if something should happen and someone should get hurt, it's really important that we act on these observations. And so, yes, I would ask for you to look at these danger trees on McConnell Road and and then let us know if that's something you can, you can take care of or whether you need more authority.
Well, I think the authority would come from the select board.
If you need it. I mean, my sense is you already have it.
Not generally. Dave has something.
So if the trees are on our right of way, we do have an obligation to maintain them, but in the past, and it worked with, you know, our former tree warden, Wayne, that Wayne and Sean would, Sean would seed these trees and he would go get Wayne, and they'd drive around and look at, you know, he'd mark them, they'd go look at them, and if they needed to be taken down, they'd be taken down. I want to remind you of one thing, though, that come July 1, we have a budget that's less than the budget season we're in right now, and I don't know how much money there's for tree removal, so that's going to be a problem because it's not cheap to cut trees down. So I'd love to do it because they are close. I drive that road every day. I know exactly what Tracy's talking about. They're dangerous. And these last few windstorms, we've seen more branches come down on that road than generally anywhere right now. So they're getting old, the woodpeckers get to them and everything, but.
I mean, there's, and it's not just McConnell Road, I just, it is something in general right around. And if it's not, if it's not in our budget this year, I definitely think come budget season, that we need to look at, we need to look at that.
Well, if it's a safety concern, we have backup funds to be able to spend for, you know, trees. Safety ought to come first. And I guess what I'm suggesting is it seems like Sean and Neil should go for a ride around and assess these, you know, dangerous trees.
But we know, pretty much like that voice here, we do it.
And so Neil, did you pick up on that? Are you going to ride around with Sean?
If he asks me nicely, sure.
Does Tree Mountain Power pretty much take care of one side of the road, wherever their lines have to be?
They'll take care of where their lines are. I think it's 25 feet on each side that they deal with, so.
So we're kind of doing half.
The guys have been doing a lot. You know, that's one reason why we wanted to get that wood chipper a few years back because we've been doing a lot of.
Right.
Other ditch clearing and, so.
They've done, they've done a lot. I said, just something that I had, and I had brought that up to Neil. I was, you know, just like, when they brought it up to him, just we were talking.
Yeah. So in the past, it's been Sean calls our tree warden and they go for a ride.
Yeah.
Wayne said, yeah, or no, I'm sure Neil will do the same thing.
Helen Anderson.
Yeah, do you still have access to the tree inventory? Because that's, that was definitive for public roadway trees in Brandon.
The tree inventory was, I think, only for downtown Helen. I know that some folks just revived it, actually, shortly after Segment 6.
Yeah, I've heard you keep it up. It's wonderful.
So it's kind of, it's not really a town, it's kind of this like pop-up group that's doing it, so. But I know Neil's worked on some of that, and actually, we started working with, oh, I can't remember the one's name of the state that.
Jordan Carter.
Thank you. Where they're actually doing it on like a, Neil and I were just talking about this today, because we're doing the same thing with culverts. It's like a GPS program that will, you know, show where the trees are and everything, and then you can put like, you know, the, the health of the tree in and everything. So that's something we started last year.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that paid for by, by state dollars when it came out of Brandon.
Yeah, and volunteer, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, and the states went great with us on it. They've been helping us because they're trying to get those shade tree programs up in a bunch of towns, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment, yeah, Neil?
May I ask that somehow we note that in addition to Sean contacting me to drive around and check out dangerous trees, that anybody who sees a dangerous tree or what they think is a dangerous tree, just let me know.
Sure. So any members of the public who see a tree that they feel might be dangerous, please alert the tree warden using the contact information on the town website, which is either there or will be there within the next days. Further public comment on other items that you don't see on the agenda?
Is there a possibility to direct a flagpole here in front of the building somewhere?
A flagpole at the town hall? I don't know that generally the board would say yes or no on that. Town manager is the chief of operations.
We have a huge flagpole in the park. Is there some reason why we'd need one in front of the town hall?
Well, this is a request that was made to Brandon today. And it is town property, and it is a very historic building. And it's sort of become the center of attention in the town.
No. Route 7 is the center of attention.
Well, maybe we should have it.
I think we could probably discuss it further. I mean, I'm just thinking we have one, two, three, four. I think we have four flagpoles already, so.
Any feelings as a board? One way or the other?
Mr. Chairman?
My attorney, Bernie.
I think I've heard that friends talking a little bit about doing something like that, so it might be worth at least talking with the friends first to see if it's something I'm thinking of doing, wouldn't be anything to do with the town at all if they get permission from the town to put it up. But I have heard somebody from that group talking about it, so at least find out what their thoughts are.
Can you check in with the sheriff, the friends? See what their thoughts are?
Actually, this, this did come from a member of the friends.
Really?
Do we know why they'd want one in front of the town hall?
Just for the reasons I stated, you know, it is a historic building and it has been quite a lot of publicity, and what has been done to it.
It's probably because there used to be one there, is my guess.
What one?
Just, just before Segment 6, didn't they take a flagpole down Segment 6?
No.
Really?
Well, there was one on the bridge across the road.
Oh, you're right, bridges, yeah.
Yeah.
My only aesthetic concern is that this is a pretty monumental scale building, and whatever goes out there is going to look like a toothpick unless it's pretty significantly sized. Do you know what I'm saying? That this isn't like putting a flagpole in front of a range hall kind of thing, you know? Anyway, I'm not against it.
Okay.
I love America. I love all Americans. I love people who are not Americans. I sleep with someone who's not an American.
Other public comments? Other public comments?
TMI. I'm not putting that.
Bernie's sorry. Bernie, come on. That's true.
Mr. Appleton? Do you know if that light is fixed yet on that monument and by the flags there? There's a, remember there was one that was on the inside, is that it?
No, that, that solar light has not been fixed yet.
Okay. But the other three work, right?
Well, it has been fixed twice, but it's broken again. So people keep running into them with their bicycles and things, and I think we need to come up with a more robust design.
Thank you.
Was this, in the park?
There's, there's one on each side of the monument.
Oh, yeah, but they just, they just keep getting hit. I mean, it's almost unavoidable. It was Bernie's design.
Okay, let's try and tighten it up here a little bit, guys. So any other items on the agenda? Okay, we can always come back, but we do have to go through the agenda. So item five is an energy committee appointment to an indefinite term. Did I see Jim Emerson here?
Yes, he was. He has a house guest, and he's gone.
Okay. So Jim is the chair of the Brandon Energy Committee. There's a letter here from Erin M. Valentine, Valentin. Is she with us? No, she's not with us. Interested in serving on the Brandon Energy Committee, has some experience in the field of renewable energy, has confirmed that she is a Brandon resident, which I always appreciate knowing before we appoint her to a committee. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make the motion that we accept her, her letter and appoint her at the Energy Commission.
Motion and a second to appoint Erin Valentin to the Brandon Energy Committee. Any discussion to be had? If not, oh, yeah.
Only discussion, how many do we have on the committee, Neil?
I think we, what do we authorize, up to like seven? I think we just authorize up to seven or seven.
So what's this, or? What does she make her? No matter.
This is true. I just think that we did just have Matt Orchard. I think this is that spot.
I think there's been a couple since Matt Orchard. I don't think they're up there.
I think there's six.
You think there are six now? So this would be seven? I think that might be.
No, I think this might make them.
This way, make them six?
Six, yes.
Oh, right, you do the minutes for them?
Yeah, I do.
Thanks. Right. Lowell.
Jack.
Jackson.
And two Jeffs.
Two Jeffs.
All right.
Right, the two Jeffs that were appointed the same night. Erin would be number six.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's certainly below seven, which I think is the authorized strength of that committee. Further comment, further discussion before we vote? All in favor of appointing Erin Valentin to Brandon Energy Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Do you have a? Six, consider requests for use of local option tax funds. This is from the town treasurer requesting the board to approve transfer of $113,754.15 from the local option fund to Fund 56, which is the infrastructure for the Park Street project. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we make the transfer.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Second? I have a question. Don't mean to put you on the spot. Is, is this like, is this the expected town contribution, so to speak? Because there were various things.
It's pretty much our match for the project, and you know, we had what?
That's what I was hoping for to hear.
Sources of money come in, so it's, it's basically the B-Trans match, and we finally got everything settled with everybody else, so. It was confusing with four funding sources on this, so.
Yeah, this was a very complicated funding project, and I have to say that it was creative in the way it was funded. It allowed the town to do a pretty prominent street in a way that the town would not have been able to do it on its own funds entirely. So there were funds from B-Trans for safe streets, complete streets.
So those kinds of things. Yeah, those were really DEC, too, for the bioswells we did. We had B-Trans, or, so it was clean water revolving fund for sewer, drinking water, which is, you know, paid by the fire district for the, for the water lines. you know, paid by the fire district for the water lines. Then we had, you know, our portion for construction and we had the DEC grant. And then we had our match for the Class 1 paving that was done on top of it, which was minimal for the whole thing, but yeah, so there's quite a bit going on there.
So again, this is, I just was, this is basically the town's contribution to get those matching funds from the various other sources. So, any further discussion on this? All in favor of the transfer from the local option fund to close out the Park Street project, $113,754.15, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. It's great, so that's not property tax money. The town treasurer did give us a little update on the current health of that fund and the fund is, it's totally adequate and she said that the first quarter payment, I think, had not even come in yet at the time that she wrote to us, so.
Or what, for what?
She was expecting it soon, but.
About $350,000 after this gets paid.
That will be the balance of the fund.
It's like $349,000 change.
But before the, but before the first quarter comes to us.
Right, yeah, right. So I think you go up another hundred and something thousand again.
Right, excellent. All right, so this is related to that because Newton Road was one of the, we talked about using some of that money for the, so Dave had asked to give us an update, which we appreciate, about the pump station, the wastewater pump station on Newton Road.
So I forgot that I had a ton of it in my town manager report, but we did receive the quote today from Peak Motor and Pump. So Tim had reached out to these folks to see what it would cost to replace, rebuild, whatever, for Newton Road pump station. And, you know, because we're sort of in an emergency type situation. So this would be doing two new variable speed pumps, which are, is good, we'll use less electricity, new controls. They will, we're going to tear down the old station and actually this will be retrofitted into what we have existing in the ground, so our wet well. And we have, I mean, I could read all this too if you guys really care, but it tied into the first main and they'll hook it all up for us with the exception of electronics. We'll have an electrician come in to do that. We're going to drain the wet well that's there and check that for leaks too because we think there's some infiltration coming up from the bottom of that. And this is Newton Road, so there's a lot of water in there. So that's what we're looking at and we're hoping within four to six weeks we'll have this done and it will be done. We'll probably have to do some type of an enclosure structure around it before snowfalls, but this will certainly get us to where we need to be with the pump station. And with the amount those pumps, those old pumps are running now and so if they're totally inefficient, we should save a bunch on our electric though. I mean, I was just looking at tonight, like Champlain Street pump station is probably half of the electric, electricity is there than on Newton Road and that's a bigger station, so we should see a significant break there. As far as the infiltration, this does kind of tie in, Tim, that's why I didn't mean to cut you short on that. But, so I did, I did locate our old INI study from, it was like 2012, 2013 and Furnish Road and Newton Road were pretty significant areas of infiltration coming in because your groundwater is so high, you're so close to the river, like every house on Furnish Road, I think, has a sump pump. So one of the big things with, I don't know, you probably don't remember, I don't know if any of you were here, maybe Seth was, we ended up actually adding to our stormwater on Furnish Road, just above Dave's old store because there was so much water coming out of some pumps on the other side that was starting to run down the road. So there's a fair amount of water being pumped somewhere and it could be going into our, on our wastewater. We started this, you know, this process, we can hopefully eliminate that and try to divert the sump pump, or sump pump water to go, because it's really not supposed to be pumped into the sewer.
Right.
Which, you know, just creates a ton of extra flow. So even when this, when the pump station was having its issues, the water coming out of the manhole was clear. I mean, it looked like that, it certainly didn't taste like that for sure, but it was, you could tell it was groundwater and not, you know, sewer. So with those two areas, those are the first ones. And actually, when Aldridge and Elliot was doing the review for the pump station a year ago, maybe it hasn't been that long, they were looking at the INI again and said, yeah, nothing's changed. Furnish Road's still bad, Newton Road's bad. The Crossville Police Station is another one that's definitely that, you know, that slow draining swamp area. So I'm going to, I hadn't had this meeting today with Michelle Cole, who's from the state DC, and Tom Brown, who does a lot of the financing side of it. We've worked with Tom off and on before. So we were looking at coming up with identifying these areas, if we're just going to pull from the report and say, okay, here's what we need to do. We'll do an RFP for some engineering services to determine what needs to happen and go from there. Because we can do like, you know, we can do the grants that are, the loans that are like 50% forgivable like we do when we go through the clean water, drinking water. We'd like to step one into the process, so that's the plan. And I've really, I wanted to initiate that call with them because I want them to know that this is urgent and we really need to get it dealt with. And I think with that, you know, it seems weird that we're putting all this money in our wastewater treatment plant, you know, but we could, we could solve the problem another way too by getting rid of the infiltration and all that going into the plant, so that's the plan. Is to continue with some sort of, you know, project, getting rid of this infiltration with the lines, whether it's replacement or slip line or manhole, you know, a lot of covers need to be re-mortgured or rebuilt and resealed, so.
Well, I have two kind of follow-up questions. The first is, it sounded like when you were talking about the Newton Road pump station and the four to six weeks, you know, you can have this all put together. It sounded like you were going to give us a number. And is there?
Oh, yeah, sure. That's got to have you guys approved anyway.
That's okay.
It's $158,671.43. That does not include electrical work. It includes the equipment, but.
Yeah, but that gets us well involved.
Oh, yeah, well, it's definitely a better option at this point in time.
So my second question is more far-reaching. So when we were talking about the wastewater treatment plant project, and I remember asking the engineer, you know, about this infiltration thing, and he says that it's a historical problem in a lot of communities because the truth is that it's just old-fashioned design and it's wear and it's like, and so what I'm trying to wrap my head around is what is the scale of the kind of the whole problem and how much of this are we addressing? And is there, should we be keeping in mind some longer range plan that's going to really solve the problem? And did you understand what my?
I absolutely understand.
And it sounds like this 2012 study is a long way along.
So I, I mean, you know how much I've kind of preached about us, you know, doing work like this on wastewater. This was like a plan in 2012 and when I read the report, I don't even remember hearing about it when I was on the slipboard. I remember them talking about doing night, you know, watching night flows, but then this report appears, so I was a little surprised that nobody ever acted on it, to be honest with you. And it was Champlain Street pump station, Newton Road pump station, and basically the lines going into those that were the problem, which makes sense because Champlain Street was up through a swamp.
So when you say it was the problem, so if we solved those three, we've really done 100% of the problem?
No, we have 22 miles to go.
Well, exactly. And that's what I'm trying to get, to understand, first of all, the whole scope and then what we're going to be doing and whether or not we should be properly documenting and planning, perhaps with a forward every so many years, doing a certain number of miles.
That would be amazing. You know, it's probably not feasible. You know, one problem is when this design is built, it's a gravity feet system, so it runs on the low parts of the town, which what else also runs on the low part of the town is the river. So, you know, this thing bobs and weaves with the river, through the river, under the river, across the river, as we found out a few years ago. And that's where it becomes difficult when you have, you know, some of these lines, well, the wastewater plant where it is is built in 1959 or 60, so, yeah, I mean, that's the problem. You're just, you're running with everything else that runs down with gravity, so we just have to keep plugging along. We've found a few, quite a few through the years too with, excuse me, especially during spring thaw, so it's more just keep going and it'd be nice if we could, you know, do a mile a year, but that's a million bucks, you know?
If it's, if it's, if it becomes like a safety concern or a regulatory problem, like if we have discharges that we get fined for, it seems like it would be a necessity rather than an option. And that's why I guess I'm still trying to understand the full size of this, you know?
I think we should have been repairing Newton Road and Champlain Street maybe simultaneously because those are the two, those are the two prime areas. I got to get with Steve and see like how much air infiltration went down on the slip line and pump station there because I think the numbers would be significant. I mean, we know, you know, today, I'm sure the flows are, you know, almost normal and I've got the numbers and I can't think of them off the top of my head, but last Monday with all the, that's what it is. It's rain that causes it to go.
So actually, you can come up with a number of how much is infiltration because you know steam and flow.
That's what we paid them to do in 2012, was figure it out.
And that would be a great metric then to drive to zero.
If we got to zero, that would be a miracle. That could be a miracle, but when we have, you know, high flows of, this is to put it in perspective, so our wastewater plant can handle up to, I think it's 750,000 gallons a day. It doesn't come anywhere near that during days like today. When we have a storm event, it takes in two million. So it tells you right, you know immediately where the, where it's coming from.
And that creates discharges that we?
Well, it's not really, no. It's not like we're dumping raw sewage into the meshing. I mean, if we're doing that, we'd be fined all the time. So it's not as bad as some people like to say it on Facebook, which I know it's lately, but it's, it needs to be, it needs to be remedied.
Thanks.
So.
We're getting it. So is it your plan that the board's authorization of the previous ARPA money for Newton Road could cover this expense and you're just looking to authorize this vendor?
And absolutely can cover the expense and yeah, and then that split basket, if you guys could, you know, support that, that we're going to use these folks.
So would the net effect be that the board's vote to encumber, restrict, dedicate some of the ARPA money would be reduced to just the amount of this project plus the electricity?
Yeah, whatever, I mean.
It's a nexus.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you can leave it the way you want.
That's very cool.
I mean, we're, you know, I mean, at this point, we've got to fix it, you know, it's going to be less than what it was before, so.
And then I. What you just said, so this is important.
Mostly what I say is important.
I had another question. So it says that they're providing a new Kohler generator. Is the generator that's there salvageable?
There's a home there.
There is a home there. Oh, we've been flying without a net for a while, I guess, on Newton Road. Okay, so with pleasure of the board on this quote from Peak Motor and Pump for $158,671.43.
Make the motion, make the vote. Neil?
Motion in a second to go forward with this quote for the Newton Road pump station funded with the ARPA money, with the required portion of the ARPA money that the board had previously set aside for the Newton Road pump station.
And if there's any discussion assigned this, so.
Yes, please.
So I think it's a great idea and I certainly support the work and the funding, but just as a point of fact, is this also something that would qualify as 1% money because it's infrastructure?
I don't think we were, thought we were trying to steer away from 1% on wastewater.
I guess I'm just curious to know if that is, falls under an allowable expense.
Probably would, but.
I think it would be technically allowable, I'm not sure I would support it.
Yeah, but, yeah.
And I, we've, it sounds like we've already got a solution with the ARPA money that we've, but I just want to know if that was true.
I mean, it's clearly capital. It's going to last a long time.
The last one was built in 93 and we've been, we've been passionate quite a bit over since I read it's really not normal.
Public comment on this plan? I had one other question, Dave. So what is, what becomes of the role of the engineers that, you know, kind of started down the design process or were they not down the design process, you know, for the other plant?
So I called ultimately actually when this was all taking place, actually the last two days, to say, hey, we got a problem here, you know? If we can move forward with this, to you guys' surprise, who I said it in my thing, like they're like, nope, do what you got to do, you know, like we're going to, we can salvage some of what's there, like the wet well and things, and still use the existing piping and stuff that's there, so there was support with that.
So do you think, like, is it going to require excessive engineering services?
Not now, we're not borrowing any money for it, so.
And there, Aldridge and Elliot are the ones who are designing the big wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, right? So it's all kind of like being looked at with one setup there?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Other public comment?
I just wondered about the Champlain Street pump station, is?
That's practically brand new.
Okay.
Yeah, it's only.
When did we do that, five years?
Less than five years old. Well, it's probably five years old now.
Yeah, I think five years ago.
Yes, I know for years that wasn't a problem.
No, that's all new. The building and everything's new there.
The town authorized the bond, that was done, and at the same time, they did some work to try to, to try to prevent infiltration into the line that feeds into it, or one of the big lines that feeds into it.
The one from Card Valley.
All right, so we need, ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, say no. unanimous? All right, so six B, the two representatives, thank you for doing this, to the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District are here and they apparently have something to bring before the board for possible action.
Okay, Mr. Chair, members of the board, if you know, I'm Wayne Rauscherberger, I'm one of your reps, and I asked Rich Russ to come up, come with me tonight, he's the other Two reasons for me to be here tonight. Number one is most, well, I think all of what we say is going to be on the website posted within minutes. The other one is I do have a request of the board, which I will mention to people, ask you at the end of this presentation. I got a very irate phone call yesterday morning from a Brandon resident about the fact that we have not been out doing any larvicide treatment with a helicopter, okay? Now, this person is well aware of how the district used to run things that did 20 years ago, they don't do today. 20 years ago, if we sent somebody out, it was a swamp and they found larvae, they would call up to the entomologist, he would come down here and he'd say, yep, we're going to treat. He said, you get your, your stuff ready down here, all the reins for the product and the helicopter, at the time it was a plane. So we didn't deal with that. Nowadays, we deal with the grant. It's a $70,000 grant. It starts July 1st, it ends June 30th. It's been going on since 2012, okay? Problem with the grant is, well, there's a bunch of things wrong with the grant. First of all, there's not enough money in it for us to do what we really need to do. Second is the cost for a helicopter right now is about $19 an acre. To get a helicopter, we have to have a minimum of a thousand acres to treat. Okay, that comes to $19,000. Then you have your product will cost $20,000 for the product and incidental labor and stuff, probably get another couple thousand, brings the cost about $41,000 for an acre. We have.
You say per acre?
No, per thousand. Per thousand acres, excuse me. We have approximately 6,000 acres in the district that are treatable, okay? We've never done, to my knowledge, a 6,000 acre treatment. Back around 2018, we got $70,000 on July 1st. On July 4th, we did a treatment that cost us, I think it was $230,000. So we spent our $70,000 in three days, but we were able to get the additional money. Say, do it, we'll take care of you. Those days are over. All we get now is $70,000. It hasn't gone up in all these years, but our expenses have. Now, this individual that called me yesterday, he said, oh, I see you have like $147,000 in treasury. Well, yes, we do, and that's probably the most amount of money that we've ever had. But if you think back the last couple of years, mosquitoes haven't been so bad. So there were board members that said, oh, we need to give money back to the towns. Well, some of the towns got wind of that and said, no, you keep. Well, some of the towns got wind of that and said, no, you, you keep that so when you need it, you don't have to come back to us asking for more money, which is great. So after about 20 minutes on the phone with this individual, we wound up on the same page. We said, there's just not enough money. Now, right now, we have $6,236 left out of the 70 that expires in June. We should have been to do it. We should have did a treatment last week. We don't have the funds. Couple of years ago, we were told that we had got a $25,000 one-time funds that could be used for an aerial treatment. It was put into an escrow account and they said, oh, well, that way you can build on it. How can you build on it? Nobody's going to give you any money to make it grow. Well, we made an inquiry about it the end of last year. Well, that $25,000 is gone. It's gone. It's gone. It just, it came and it went. So we're between a rock and a hard place. We're not exterminators. We're just trying to make it more tolerable for the people that live in the district. One other thing I'd like to say is originally there was $140,000, well, there is $140,000. But that gets split between two districts. Now, the other district has about 1,000 acres. And like I said, we have 6,000. So if you think about it, you break it down, their 1,000 acres, they're, they can spend $70 an acre. Our district, because of the 6,000 acres, we can spend $11.66. So that's where we're at. I'm as frustrated as the resident that called me. He understands that things are not the way they used to be. And his comment to me was, well, I think we need to write a letter to the governor. So if Rich will back me up, I am asking the select board to propose a letter to the governor saying that your district reps or the two of us have requested more money, more money to given to the district. Because we're in an old win situation, you know? People expect things, but we can't deliver. And I think Rich will agree with you. We know that the larvicide part is, it's critical and it works, but it's also not a silver bullet. It doesn't solve the whole problem. So you also have to do your adulticide. So that's pretty much where I'm at. But I am going to ask that, that the board send a letter to the governor requesting more money for the district. And maybe while you're at it, you might want to get in touch with Stephanie Jerome and Butch Shaw because they represent the district. I know Butch probably won't be representing Brandon anymore, but he is, he lives in Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh is in district. So it's up to you. If you, if you think that you want to do that, that would be great. Because all the years, I've been on the board 14 years and everybody always says, oh, don't step on anybody's toes. Well, it's fine.
So can I ask a couple of questions? Isn't this a legislative appropriation and not a directed amount from the executive?
As far as I know, I, I've asked a million times, you know, what does it say? You know, who, who did this and when did they do it? It's always been.
Joyce and Apura did this in 2012. Like this was his, like, last very important thing that he wanted to do before he stopped being the state representative. And for that reason, I think that this comes out of legislature every year. I don't think this is like part of a spending package that goes to the governor and he decides who gets what. I think it's a line item.
I don't know how it works, but I mean.
All right. My second question is, has the insect control district written its own letter to the state?
We're, we just had a meeting last Thursday and it was voted on that yes, we are going to, we're going to send one at least to the governor. And they were talking about sending one to the legislators.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the funding that comes from this Department of Ag, correct, is only for larvicide anyway. That's all they pay, that's all they cover. They wouldn't, if these guys wrote a letter and said, we want more money for, you know, bug spray, they're probably going to say, no, because we don't do adulticide, we fund larvicide.
Well, then the letter can say, you know, we want, we want more money put towards the larvicide grant. That's what I, that's what I'm looking for.
So I, I'm interested to know how much more you want.
Well, I'm saying it's about $41,000 to do 1,000 acres. And normally, we're probably going to do three and maybe 4,000. So, you know, you're asking 160, 180,000 dollars to the set load. You got 70, so you're asking another, another 100,000 or another 125,000.
And another thing to look at, we do not know what the price of the product is going to be after July 1st. Well, we're operating on now the stuff that has been stockpiled, the larvicide, has been stockpiled from last year when we had the, you know, dry season or whatever and didn't use it out or couldn't get the helicopter and needed to spread.
How many aerial applications in the course of a season? What, what's the greatest number of them?
I think the most we've, the most we've ever done, I think, since I've been on it too. Oh, excuse me. That's with the helicopter. But Lemon Fair used to have a plane and we didn't need to have 1,000 acres. So, you know, it could have been, it could have been four or five times.
But the number you're talking about would do a treatment of 4,000 acres once.
Correct.
Correct. Nobody does with a plane anymore.
Nope.
Public comment, further board comment, folks on Zoom? Any thoughts? I'm, I'm happy for the board to write a letter. I just want to make sure that we write a letter that's appropriately directed and is therefore likely to get considered. Like, I'm not interested in writing a letter and having the board sign on to a letter and, you know, shoot it into the wind kind of thing. Like, I, I think this needs to go to the decision makers. So I would love it if the insect control district might find out, in fact, what the funding direction is up there, like.
Well, Dave is right. I mean, it comes through the Ag Department, okay? They administer the grant. But I don't believe that when they put their budget together, they're like, the legislator said X amount of dollars and that's all you're getting. It's not like the Ag Department's looking to put more money into our grant.
I, I think before I would support the board writing a letter, I would want to see kind of like, you know, if you're proposing to spend money, you know, this is how you want to spend it, some kind of a summary sheet that says, this is why we want this much money to do this much, you know? And, and, and it sounds like you'd like to have this every year. And so.
Oh, I, I would like whatever amount of money we get. Yeah, definitely. And if we could get the grant to go from 70 to 150 or whatever, you know? But it's been $70,000 since 2012. This is 2022. Now, I'm sure every one of your expenses here has gone up since 2012.
Except our workers' farm.
So.
I would, I would love to talk with Butch and Stephanie, you know, kind of before we get too far down the road, right?
I think, Wayne, it'd be important for you to give them important bullet points to know, because I think a big one is, as Tracy said, the train, the plane's not flying anymore. And the plane was quite a bit cheaper than a helicopter, correct?
Yeah, that's a point.
Yeah. So their costs have gone up dramatically and they need to spray a minimum of 3,000, 4,000, whatever it is acres to get all those bullet points and say, we can't do it with the same amount of money and make the exact point Wayne just said. Everything's going up and.
There is a basic inequity in how the funding was from the very beginning, which was divided simply in half without regard to the size of the operation of the two districts. And, and that's, that's been inequitable for the whole 10 years that they've been participating this way.
And then to boot, two years ago, I believe it was, Chittlin County was talking about doing mosquito district. And we were told if they do, some money's going to be split three ways.
Surprise.
So it's almost like, you know, why bother?
I mean, I, I, as I said, I think the board's been very supportive. I think the board will continue to be supportive of mosquito abatement efforts and of the district's efforts. I just don't think that it's going to be, it's going to have any impact at all until we consult with the legislators that we have who are in that mix of, you know, how does this get approved? Who says how much? Can you advocate for some change in the way it's done so that the amount is increased? Like, can you do that with a letter? Can you do that without a letter? Can you do that in your normal hearing process, your normal legislative budget writing process up there?
Well, I know that before the pandemic, I was up on Philly with two of the employees because we had what needed to be, what they had called a card, went up there. We had it for a day and you can explain, you know, what you do. We did meet with Stephanie Butch and I said to the guy from Addison County, we had a meeting with him to explain, you know, what we, you know, what we needed. But I don't know whatever became of it after, you know, we talked to them there. So, I mean.
Maybe now that the session's over, I mean, I know it's the campaign season for them now, but maybe talking with them here in the community would be a good approach.
Just wanted to ask Wayne, has, have you guys approached any other towns to do this same exact thing or is it just us?
No, this is Wayne Rousenberger. Because like I said, I got that irate phone call yesterday and the result was maybe we need to write a letter.
The wheels are spinning and I'm thinking like, you know, you, I mean, you guys are essentially your own municipality.
Correct.
And we're only part of the sort of the membership, you know, that gets your, that has, that utilizes your services. Like, I, I just don't know how that would work if it was just one of us. It seems like if every town was, you know, yes, we all need to write a letter, which.
Probably, probably a joint letter, I think, is what you're saying.
Well, right. At least it'd be more impactful. Yeah. It seems like every, every member in the district might still be, you know, saying the same thing. I think that would hold more clout.
Well, the district has asked one individual on the board to propose a letter to the governor. That would be from the district. But I'm looking for additional support, like, okay, the district asked for it. Now each individual town is also asking for it. Maybe it will have a little bit more clout. I don't know. I don't know how this works.
Now, Butch and Stephanie are aware of the situation. This grant is due every day as to, it's administered through the Department of Agriculture. Where the money actually comes from for the grant is, nobody seems to know.
Well, it must be appropriated by others.
Right.
I, I think, I think before the board fires off a letter without a lot of direction, I think we should talk to legislators. That's my, and that's, that's only Seth Hopkins' opinion. That's not a brand select word.
Already wrote down.
What, you're going to, you're going to try and touch base with Butch and Stephanie?
You guys are fine with it. I have no problem talking to them about it. I mean, I, you know, I talked with, I talked with Butch quite a bit through the last, you know, the last things we helped you guys out with. So if you guys want me to, I have no problem talking to Butch and Stephanie about it and see what their take is on it.
Clout? Objection? No, it's not right. To me, it seems like that's the best prospect for coming up with something significant.
Yeah. I, I think if our reps are writing a letter or going up there and doing what they do for us, that holds way more clout than us doing it or you guys doing it, you know?
Well, I just, we just need to get the ball rolling because this is, this is just ridiculous. And every year the prices go up and the grants stay the same. It's like, like I said before, it's almost not worth having a grant.
This, you know, this is kind of a good time to be asking them for money because I think there's a lot of money slushing around.
Yeah, I've heard that too. And we've tried a couple of other things for different reasons and didn't pay out.
Now, when did your, your $19 an acre, was that last year's price or is that?
That's what I figured.
That's current?
I figured that's what it is right now. I was, well, this moment, he said it's about $19 an acre.
Yeah.
So to be effective, the grant really should be a acreage-based grant, not a money grant. You have cost of living increases for social security. So if you're, if you know that the minimum amount of acreage you need to have is 3,000 acres and you need, that needs to be what's to the safety of the villagers, you need to have 3,000 acres larvicide. And then that's how they need to build their budget up there. That makes more sense to me. And what is it, what's the other district doing with extra money?
They don't have any extra money.
They don't say they have any extra money.
There's no extra money.
Because they're probably using for larvicide. Sounds like they need to do some auditing too.
Okay.
The, the, my one last thing, based on what Bernie's just saying, yeah, you can come up with a cost to do 3,000 acres. But then you have to remember that there are other things in the grant that we're required to do over the course of the year that add more cost other than treating 3,000 acres. You know? It's what leads up to being able to do that 3,000. You know, and it's all weather related. Not saying, if you can get in touch with the legislature.
I think that's how we'll start.
Come on.
Yep.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Item seven is the bills for the session. Pleasure of the board?
Making more to my approval. We approve it. Where were big school payment and that one we do?
Right. Any questions on any of those? They're all in good order.
And glasses, you can't read them.
Okay. Don't, don't exclude that. Strike that from the record.
Take the school out of there. It's like over $1,000.
Yeah, the school, the school, the school amount is over $10.
Yeah.
No. Interesting, there's another negative bill in this, in this batch. I've never, I've never until like the last few months seen minus numbers on the warrants.
Credit.
It's the credit. Like, it is, it says so. But generally speaking, those go to credit accounts and we're paying other, you know what I'm saying? A little bit.
I'm sorry.
All in favor of the warrant as it was presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no?
Yes.
Perpetual. Are there any announcements for the good of the community type? Okay. If not, the board's going to recess and then we have posted an executive session about the evaluation of a public officer or employee, which will include the town manager. So thank you all.